I think we're alive um thank you guys for thank you guys for joining in tell me how everything looks uh in terms of audio and stuff just gonna make sure like my microphone and everything is on making sure my plugs and stuff how do I sound I'm just gonna wait till like uh you know at least ten people show up before I get started um once again oh wow already eight people already joined in nine okay this is pretty quick everything looks straight alrighty so alright we got ten people hey 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 everyone who's joining in thank you guys let me just hey Kyle welcome back sorry if you hear like a lot of like noise of me moving it's cuz like I'm keep bumping my legs into the desk alright so what I plan on doing today is uh trying to fix the screen links via for the fever arena space right here so if you guys remember from the first livestream um I was working on the fever arena entrance I plan on doing just the original fever arena space uh one of the other developers my friend dead sec um he helped me you know get this screen or basically this video upon a screen and if you see like a bunch of like uh text on the screen I'm trying to check on the system's memory so I'm just making sure um how things are running via with the video right now so I won't go over memory when try adding like a posters so hey hey I'm doing good I'm also going to right now um before we even get started I'm going to disable the enable memory stats so it's not showing on the screen on home alright so that's done and also I'm going to turn off the video volume um to this space oh it's probably not even on right now and that's only due to the fact of like copyright issues I'm not trying to like uh deal with that but you I already know the video is working so the goal is the space should be pretty simple cuz it's like one two um three four so about like six or seven posters so I'm gonna just sit my character right here and we're gonna watch some uh fever arena soccer and I am going to get started on actually which I'mma call it debugging the screen link so first things first I am going to uh which I'mma call it go to my local scenes so let me actually look at this and I need to find a directory for this I think it's called fever pitch but uh I'm not too sure like I have to I have this basically this list where I have to try to find like the exact file configuration so yeah it's FIFA pitch I did remember it and now we gotta get everything set up from the screen links um let me try something alright so environment I got to find uh and if you guys wanna ask me any questions feel free to um cuz the stream is basically for you guys alright let me just go ahead and prep out my videos I'm doing this from scratch I usually have like some stuff I have sometimes prepped but uh usually I don't but here's the screen links to the FIFA video and um okay so there's some lower scripts on the screen and there's some stuff alright so this is going back to the posters I know these links are probably dead but it's clearly let me just try to see if it's open yeah the links are dead to this hey Nagato when do you think home will be running up again fully online there's no ETAs via for that only due to the fact it deals with reverse engineering but okay when I go to change my outfit to something else it freezes I used to be able to do this and can't figure out what causes it um and if this is on like what builder on Legion one point eighty six cuz it could be like a test inventory XML um but let me go back to this so these posters where is referring to FIFA two three two four two five I think these are these posters for sure so what I'm gonna actually do is kind of like a cheat sheet I'm gonna turn off the meteor RS stuff since it's not running from online I gotta set everything back to offline I'm going to use the other fever arena stuff that I was messing with the other day from the entrance and look at their um I'm actually gonna look at that screen link too just to compare and contrast I'm I'm also gonna compare um files or like actual things or like the the other images so I'm gonna try to take these two images and place it from the original space or the entrance and I'm just try to slap it onto another location so I'm gonna take this source file since I'm trying to do less work alright just to test alright and then uh what's the other one called was it called FIFA O two I'm not too sure oh yeah I called it FIFA O two so I'm gonna take one and I'm gonna call this FIFA O two and then I'm just gonna save hopefully the images will pop up cuz these actually became from the original servers themselves um if you DM me another time I or probably in my DMs on Discord I could probably help you out and we could try to see what is it like a certain item alright so one poster did pop up for sure one well actually the video turned off but this right here actually um broadcasted via right here so I don't want that I want the video to play hold on images I'm wondering if it's having issues V FIFA O two what I'm gonna do is try to delete that I don't want these uh I may have to try like different scene links and just try to play around with stuff because um I don't want like the main video cuz I'm just testing um in terms of like placement right now this console has at least twenty years more as in term and lots of games please consider NPS two stuff on how to activate Codebreaker when playing a PS two game on PS three I I actually did a Codebreaker video for PS three to PS two that's weird did I not change the ah hold on um I need to make sure I'm doing the correct one and I think there's like a lower script issue with this scene so I may not actually be able to restore a lot of this stuff on FIFA all the previews that's normal since uh when I was doing a client very earlier I was using like ninety seven stuff and I was trying to um which I'mma call it um I was porting stuff and we didn't add thumbnails but um at least we got the first little which I'mma call it right here uh we got the first poster up which is good so at least we know where like which posters is which so I did what I want to do for that one so seven so that's not like it freezing that's just uh like the thumbnails not showing cuz it's not added but that's another goal I'm planning on doing is trying to fix all the thumbnails for items but there's so many and I was using like custom UU ID so I have to like manually go back and try to check yeah I would actually check the logs cuz if you're freezing at boot that I'm not too sure because I I don't even think that's like a patch issue cuz I usually QA before anytime I like release patches as well um I'll show you guys what I've been uh working on via hold on I will kinda make this little alright so I don't know if you can see this on my alright I don't know if it's kinda like bigger on the screen now but I've been working on this um GitHub like between like yesterday and today and I got everything done so if you guys wanna get any of the latest like home patches and you wanna see it in like a you know a nice and neat format and you wanna see like the change logs of what um basically me and the team have been doing you could just go to GitHub um see the actual get and source code files and you could just download the patches there instead of like going in the Discord and scrolling all the way up I think this is a better method on doing this and it's like a ton of patches though like there's version like base one point zero zero all the way up to version point one point twenty and you can see like everything will be right here but that's kind of another topic for later but um let me but let me go ahead and see if the other um poster is up right now and my mom oh I thought she was talking to me caliber with like PS three alright so these two posters are up right now which is nice cuz these are like original fever arena themed clothing uh we need to figure out what we could add via here I'm going to actually use a DDS file that came from the actual scene itself so I have to go on my PC real quick and I have to figure out where the hell I put the I need to figure out where I put the actual DDS file to like i- i- it's like for fever arena it's just like a big screen to it let me check my work folder uh I don't even know where I put it at and that's kind of a bummer hold on cuz I'm trying to hold on it may be in here okay yeah cuz I know fever arena had like some like a pretty good texture I could use and I could probably use that as the main screen like that for example is pretty good like that's what I'm actually gonna do let me open up Photoshop and I'm gonna use like original stuff that came with the actual scene itself and I'm going to base off my uh client with that or base the whole theme of this space with this I also need to figure out the dimensions I always forget but uh I don't know hey Sora how you doing how's your kingdom hearts oh my yo bro I've actually this is like me cleaning it up right now because it was way worse it's getting better though cuz I I'm trying to clean up my PC cuz later on today I plan on working on some PlayStation Vita stuff I'm prepping a video for that and then um yeah I'm just waiting for Photoshop to boot up but my PC is kinda slow I've been trying to install a lot of stuff via for GitHub and learning how to upload what's up red scorpion thanks for joining fourteen people um and I don't even know how long this livestream is gonna go to be honest um depending on how I feel and depending on how much work I really wanna do is basically gonna generate it last time I went for five hours and I really didn't understand that for myself but uh yeah for the twelve people who can't or came thank you once again I'm just waiting for Photoshop to boot up but once that is doing this thing we could go ahead and uh we could get some source images I wanna use I'm going to I mean I could use a lot of the stuff from the basis files I had before like this is a good one for example I could also look at uh cash data but um I don't know yeah Photoshop is taking a while and that's weird cuz it usually doesn't give me issues alright so let me open up okay so Photoshop is up now I planning on taking this like that Sony picture or whatever and post the needs to here cuz I know there's some uh stuff I can add via in cash data okay but in the meantime let me see it's trying to open up a new document alright so Photoshop is working with me my PC is just being slow I know most home posters are two fifty six by three sixty eight in size and um that's what I'm basically gonna be basing off everything unless I have to make it custom cuz that's just usually the general consensus when it messes with that alright so we're gonna take this football Japan thing yeah I'll whatever actually to make this I don't know if I wanna make a white background so it could fill it in or I don't know I mean that looks pretty straight to me I guess so let me go to save as and I need to convert this to a PNG so let me go back to my environment and I'm going to go to FIFA pitch okay image I'm gonna call this fever or Sony FIFA doc cuz it's like some document and now um I'm gonna try to find this one we can mess with that a little bit okay so I'm gonna go back to Photoshop once again and I'm going to do the same thing and let me try to stretch this out so alright that looks pretty straight I'm gonna call it I don't know Sony one or whatever I usually use dumb file names uh only due to the fact that I I try to keep things simple okay I'm trying to see cuz this is like from the actual space itself that we can uh just copy to the source I'm gonna go back FIFA pitch image alright and then what I'm gonna do is now go back into the cache data folder that I have on my PC and I'm going to uh cuz I know for sure there was a ton of like fever arena stuff in here and I want to uh go back over that so just wanna make sure cuz I don't know if it was in the world oh yeah it's in a I'm looking in the wrong folder that's world maps yeah like I remember seeing stuff for literally for the FIFA pitch thing so I'm just gonna drag and drop anything fever related and we can uh utilize that like I don't even know this video I know I can't play two more than two videos in a space due to um which I'mma call it memory issues hopefully this video is not corrupted and it's not using like some weird codec or whatever cuz that would be trash this is for Grand Three small five I remember this video that's for something else that's odd I guess they were promoting Grand Three small five that's how you I could tell this data is very old like it's from like twenty ten two thousand nine alright alright I think this data is like a landfill for just fever arena stuff and then we can um we could just mess around with this and I can uh start thief casters like these are pretty cool they're just fine I think that's all of it cuz everything is like XML after this public viewing in Africa that's probably that cuz I wanna toggle I think memory shouldn't be an issue in this space at all alright I know I'm neglecting the chat so if you guys are answering any questions I'm coming back okay oh okay y'all guys are just talking in there welcome to the um which I'mma call it welcome to the live stream guys alrighty so I think we got enough uh basic material so we get working on fever arena but uh I'm going to I'm going to uh go back into not too sure why the video turns off that may be an issue so either A I may not have posters or I may have to like take something off I'm just reloading the scene cuz I'm trying to see which screen is for which right now oh snap so fever arena screen is so big that it like splits into like two damn screens that's crazy so how would they that's weird that's very weird how they did that cuz I know you can't cuz I remember the fever arena screen so it's a sixteen by nine video but the middle video has to play alright that makes sense why dead sec didn't add okay well hopefully I'm trying to get the video pop up hey Nagato do I got the ratchet and clink uh space yeah I do I'm if you want me to I could go to it really really quickly alright so yeah the video is fine um what I'll do now for you Davine I'll go to ratchet and clink because I'm still gonna have to work on the PC so really wouldn't matter but I'll go to ratchet and clink really quick I don't mind it and then once I go into ratchet and clink actually I'll show you ratchet and clink and then I can show you what I've uh done for that client in a older update I have to just scroll through the list and it takes a little while and I have to turn back on the audio for the PlayStation three because right now I have it turned off cuz I don't wanna get like copyright flagged if like some audio gets catched by Sony thing or I mean not Sony but YouTube uh does the song for ratchet and clink yeah um I can't play the song like actually I will have it still muted due to that fact you reminded me but like the little Groovatron thing uh for fever arena does work yeah like um where you could get Vita Trophy folders from um there's a Reddit post that I posted way back in the day that you could uh check out there's only like I don't even know cuz I I don't do Vita Trophy modding anymore but uh if you wanna check that out here's like a old Reddit post I made like way back but uh here is ratchet and clank I did add the I add like a ratchet and clank video just showing off like the ratchet and clink trilogy that came out on PS three so I made sure I added that over there um me and Juanma Juanma did the rebuilding of the games but like the interactive items like I found the little Groovatron thing but um he rebuilt them from scratch but yeah you can see here the Groovatron dude is working and the music will work just fine um I just don't have the music on due to copyright issues cuz I'm not gonna play it and try to like re-edit that back the space the space is already in the build it's in the base client like if you download one point eighty six um from me or the destination home it's already in there home graphics look like PlayStation two for some now I mean I think home home looks actually better than most of the social worlds now that still are out on PS four I mean I don't think the graphics are too bad I mean I know even on uh RPCS three you can um which I'mma call it you can like up your resolution like there's some dude that like runs home almost in like eight K no worries yeah but if you're in the destination home server the one point eighty six client is fine but let's go back into FIFA and get this set up cuz uh that's today's main focus for me alright so there's some stuff still calling XMLs from the Japanese home servers and we need to turn that off so just to get an idea of the images I'm going to I need to go ahead and set the client to fever arena FIFA pitch so I need to rename this one cuz I'm gonna have it read from I'm gonna have like two of the images I already did read from the old folder and I'm gonna have the new stuff and like the new one so what I'm going to do is I'mma call this Sony one or so that actually came from that one so Sony one dot PNG and I'm going to name one of those that and I'm going to name Sony FIFA document it's going to be in another section okay and then uh environment let me make sure everything is straight cuz like I already see I made a mistake gotta make sure it's not rendering off of the media RSS stuff cuz then it's gonna start shooting out arrows yeah like it's already memory is iffy right now but it's whatever oh I just had an idea can home run at sixty FPS on RPCS three yeah on PS three it's capped off at like thirty FPS like right now it's at twenty nine point ninety seven so basically thirty frames but I've seen home hit like sixteen to seventeen so we got the posters via right here so it kinda looks more official now um let me just rerun the I don't even know what I wanna do for these big chunky like like I don't even know the dimensions I should put cuz this is like a big big border I could put right here okay I'm gonna do something really dumb but uh Okay, I'm gonna do something really dumb, but uh let's see. Let me look up Zakumi cuz that would like the Fever Arena um how big is Zakumi? I need like the biggest image of him. I'm trying to that was like the mascot for the twenty-ten Fever Arena thing, but I'm trying to find like a really huge image of this guy, just like and then just stretch him out and then I'm going to try to figure out. Okay, yeah, that's like two thousand like resolution. Unplug my mic for a second. Uh but what I'm gonna do now is um I don't even know what size we can make him cuz what I'm planning on doing is probably put Zakumi on both sides of this. And uh yeah. I'm trying to get what is like a good size horizontally? Maybe this is. That looks pretty damn straight if we're gonna do that, so. Trying to like stretch him out as much as possible. Uh just wanna make sure it doesn't look too off though. Cuz I gotta think about the scale of it and I have to reset. Like I have to change just so it reads as like a um we're just gonna call him Zakumi big. So I know it's like the big size file and I or like the dimensions. I just went to go read the chat, but um let's see. So this file right here, it may actually read double double the thing. So I'm gonna actually set this to images. And I'm going to set this to FIFA Pitch. Um image and I believed we saved him via in the correct or nah, that's the cache thing. I may resize him if I don't like him, like being that big. But I'll I couldn't even probably do like a little toggle thing, but let's see how this looks. I'm not too sure if my idea will work, but it just dawned on me since I can't use two videos, I will fill those spaces. So it looks somewhat, you know, better. Uh so it like splits him, but it okay. I'm trying to think cuz it I guess what it does is like splits the like actual video in the medium in the middle. So it it's not like doing what I wanted to do. I'm not too sure how would I do this. That may be something I could test out later, but my idea, my general idea did work though. Actually, I wanna see, hold on, FIFA. I may actually do some quick research. I'm gonna look at like old PlayStation home videos of Fever Arena. Oh, my God, I'm already they already caught me for live streaming. What the hell? When I looked up on Google. Alright, so let's just see. Oh, let me turn this down. Yeah, so it's doing the same idea I had. They had like they had like on one side of the screen, they had like some Japanese writing or whatever and then they had um lower screen. Bruh, hold on. Let me see. I swear if this may be it. I don't know if the lower scripts will work because I don't yeah, scene script the lower unexpected symbol symbol is probably encrypted. Yeah, it's probably encrypted more than likely and it's uh hmm well, I'll just leave it black for now because I don't wanna mess with that, but at least we know um FIFA Video two screen is like that sixteen by nine thing, but uh what we're gonna do is I'm gonna leave this out. So it was it won't read and I will um we're gonna be testing out other screens. So FIFA three. We're just gonna test since I'm messing with this. I'm just gonna test if three and four are the the side screen. So let me set this to images. So hopefully Zakumi will pop up on these two screens right here and then that'll be straight and then we could do something else with that. Let me mix with that. FIFA go. Alright, so our boys Zakumi still um you know, looking fantastic. We may actually cuz I know he's getting stretched out right now, but he looks fine. To be honest, he looks straight with that, but um what I plan on doing is giving him some more shine and I'm going to uh I'm going to use like nine twenty by ten eighty standards. So let me stop opening up Discord. So we he still will have a purpose. Um let's see. Okay. I just wanna make sure as well. Um I'm gonna check out the other images cuz I wanna see how big is this? This will kinda give me an idea. So five twelve by two eighty-eight. Let's actually what I'll do is we will um for both of the screens, I'll have it set to this. And then we're gonna make another fourth code line for each screen and this is where Zakumi is going to be after I fix him, but uh let's add Zakumi. He's this big guy right here. Alright, he fit just perfectly in there. We're gonna call him, I don't know Zakumi. Uh Zakumi, um I don't know, one, whatever. That's pretty basic. And then uh I will have him since the source file is almost the same as this one, I'll toggle it. And we could do Zakumi one. And we're gonna put that for the bottom line there. And then let me go ahead and save this and we should be straight for the images. Bring back the Zella. Yeah. Oh, yeah, usually that's the like primary thing you could do. If you have any troubles, just reinstall the patches. Alright, so that looks pretty good. Um I'm trying to see if it toggles. Okay. So yeah, the screens are working. These two, I'm technically done now. Um but all the screens are basically mapped. Right here, I wanna do a toggle with two screens. So let's go back into the source root files and we're gonna go back to uh we're gonna go to this one right here. And we're gonna go to FIFA and we're gonna try to toggle it. B, D, and H. I'm just looking at what we can do. You know what? This may be actually easier if it's the same file size. Three fifty-two by five oh four. I mean, to be honest, uh let me see something. Let me go back to this and we're going to put I wanna see how that looks. Like I wanna make sure like I don't have too much. So that's the opening movie. We could do something different. We could toggle that. Cuz I think it will resize it for itself and since it's already like pre-made for the server, like this actually came from home. Uh it should do. I don't think I need to mess with Photoshop. If I have to, then I can, but let's just see if those two images pop up. And then we can add a third image cuz the other stuff I just I will leave it basic. But how does Fever Arena look, guys? Uh it looks it's starting to look better, right? Yeah, it looks okay. Yeah, it looks it looks totally fine. So um trying to think right now. I actually want to add uh for I may want to add. I don't know how many. We're gonna try to do four sources. And we're going to see how we could play around with that. So let me just add two base ones right here and then we're gonna figure out which is which now. So this is gonna just be like the actual like scoreboard and stuff. And I'm gonna toggle that. So I just wanna make sure I don't go over like the memory cap. Cuz let me see right now. Yeah, memory is fine for the most part. But I just wanna make sure I'm not having any issues. Right now, um everything should be alright. You like it? That's good. Cuz I'm trying to like, you know, anytime I do these spaces, I wanna have like a general theme and try to stick to it as much as possible. And I try to get original data that was once used for this. So um yeah, you see here that both of the screens are now pulling up this data. Kinda make sure. So everything is sorry, they toggle at the same time. But yeah, I think I'm pretty much done with Fever Arena. I actually it kinda went quicker than I wanted or I wanted to be. Uh I can't really fix that metal screen or these size screens right now cuz that will take some time uh due to lower script issues and I would probably have to uh try to think of something. I would have to try to think of something I could do in order to uh what you ma call it. To aid that, but I think we did good with Fever Arena. Looks nice now. But yeah, Fever Arena is now officially done. Let me uh let me go back to like my little patch notes where I usually write everything down. So let me just add here FIFA Arena entrance or nah? Added. Let me see, original content revolving revolving around the FIFA franchise. Alright, that sounds okay. Yo, what's up? What's up? What's up? But yeah, that is fully done now. Um I kinda could show you what I've been working on yesterday. If anybody was missing the last livestream, I worked on the Head Candy space and I got that fully fixed. Um I added like actual like head candy um like cover art for music and just like regular like wallpapers. And I um added like the original like head candy poster that was in the scene itself. So I could go over that real quick. So we got Head Candy here. I really, really do like this poster. It looks super cool. Um we got some of the posters here. So you can see how you know it's themed around the space. And then um this is a song playing over here. Uh it's Leisure Groove. I'm not gonna play it due to copyright issues, but it's a really good, beautiful song. Uh but yeah, here's Head Candy. So it has like the whole club vibe to it. I'm pretty happy what I did with the Head Candy space personally. Um but yeah, that's basically it for Head Candy. Um trying to just do a rundown. I'll show you Fever Arena entrance real quick just to show you uh if you guys missed that stream and then after that, I'm going to try to find a random space and we're just gonna work from the ground up. Uh you know yeah, I'm on custom firmware. I'm on four point eighty-four rebug and this is my regular PlayStation three. I'm not using my development kit PS3 right now because it runs uh kinda loud and I don't wanna put any like stress on it per se, like any wear and tear. But um yeah, I'm just using like any regular four point eighty-four uh CFW. On my uh development kit, I'm on four point eighty-four DCR LE firmware. Uh but here is Fever Arena. Actually, I'll just debug cam it. It'll just be a little easier. Oh. So you can see here, I added some custom stuff via right here. I can turn on the volume a little bit. So here, I'll turn it maybe like ten negative ten decibels. Okay, but yeah, you can see here I have Zakumi. Um that's where I actually got the idea from messing with FIFA today. You can see I added some of the posters, some of the same stuff, but uh I added like the winning team, which was Spain in twenty-ten. Uh you see here, I added this poster and I added these two base posters for the video screens here since I can't add more, but um yeah. Oh, me? Oh dude, I don't even use online like me on CFW. This this PlayStation three is purely for development for home. Like I don't mod on it or anything. Like online, like I I really don't care for being online. Uh but yeah, that's that. We're gonna go to, I don't know. We're gonna just take a look at some spaces and we're gonna see if I have to fix any screens and stuff because yeah. Let me see Street Fighter. I don't know if I did this. I think I did, but I'm really let me see Street Fighter I don't know if I did this I think I did but I'm really not too sure it's been a while since I like you know messed with this cuz I'm not even yeah alright so oh yeah I did this already what the hell so clearly I did Street Fighter okay that's weird I don't recall me doing this but I guess I did the Street Fighter four space let's try another one action district let me see why is discord starting I'm gonna go into action or action district excuse me and we're gonna try to fix the screen links um I think I did it in an old client but I had some trouble running a video I was trying to play one of videos I had like for just PlayStation home and I guess it was too high quality it was like four K but I tried to downgrade it to seven twenty P and it still didn't like it alright so okay looking at this right now do you know if you could get sued for modding I don't think you'll get sued that's kinda crazy but uh I think you could just get banned like um but action district looks like it has a couple of posters let's just check out the whole scene itself one two three four five uh so I'm seeing like six posters right now this shouldn't be too hard uh but yeah I don't know what type of posters would be posted in action district so let me do some research just to kinda get the overall vibe on how action district was back in the day so I'm just gonna do some research oh let me see so I'm just looking over here okay so it's like a leaderboard alright so it's just basically regular home advertisements it seems for like clothing alright so it was just for okay so it's basically just for clothing and it's just home advertisement stuff okay we could do that hey Blitz welcome to the livestream so this just seems pretty damn easy we could use content I didn't use for the hub and we could post it via here or whatnot but before I get started on that um I will go take a quick water break and get me something to drink real quick since I'm pretty parched and then we're gonna get started with the videos and nah on Vita nobody bans on Vita you can mod trophies on Vita I've done it like a couple of times this saga alright I'm back and yeah I did had to use the background I did took a piss uh but uh whatchamacallit let me get started on this now let's go ahead and look up for content uh home is still alive in a sense I'm using a offline client but uh whatchamacallit but uh let me go ahead and try to find Magnus play or let me see PlayStation home we could just use some random PlayStation home showcase I'm trying to get the one I don't I think I remember it it's called like showcase fifty-nine or fifty-three or fifty-eight it was called yeah this one had the Adidas stuff and I really like this one uh so what I'm gonna do is take this video right here and we're gonna post it on that building over there but let's go I'm gonna use my sketchy website hopefully yeah six forty by three sixty this space should be alright oh shut the hell up hold on the video just played in my ear and it blasted me so this shouldn't be too hard and okay so that video right there um is now downloaded on my PC what we need to do as of right now is to go to uh the local scene list and I need to find out the space name so I don't know how I exactly named it thus okay it's called SE edition um action district so I gotta find okay so A C E A core action let me go back to the root source and we're gonna basically do the same thing like we it's kind of like a rinse and repeat situation most of the time unless I have to do something out of the ordinary but uh here's the folder we're gonna be working in we have screen link so thank God for that a lot of the stuff is getting called from online so looking at this a lot of stuff was utilized from you EU servers but the video actually is here let's see if this video is still alive what the hell the original video hold up timeout so right now I don't know if you guys seen that that okay so this link right here I'mma post it in the chat this will download strictly to your computer and this is the exact same file that was played in PlayStation home so that's crazy this happened to me twice so when I was working on the game Moonbase so the so one of the files on the server is still up from that location and this is for Warhawk which is pretty funny cuz Warhawk is another um team that we're kinda working with uh the destination home team and they work on like uh media stuff as well so that's crazy that you know that actually pulled from a server like itself like that link downloaded to my PC so that's online what I'm going to do now is I'm gonna try to test a theory maybe I don't know um I'm kinda shocked still alright what I'm going to do now is go ahead and let me set up the environment source or let me not delete that but um we're gonna go ahead and set up the source for this I'm just gonna use fever arenas just as a basic source and then I'm gonna like follow along with other stuff so it's an environments S C E core action is the folder we're working in and uh we need to I'm gonna create a video file source and I'm gonna create image folder so we can work into those directories itself video and then I'm going to do image and I like to work on the videos first since um that sometimes takes some stuff alright I'm just gonna actually dump these two videos into this location since that's where it actually go that and um I am going to call one PlayStation home I'm not too sure if we can run videos back to back maybe I think you can I think if you throw in one same line you can so what I'm gonna do is call this uh P S H M P four and I'm gonna call one Warhawk since that's what it is and uh that's kinda crazy that this video is still here and uh so we will have some original content for sure and let's just get that done and we're gonna do some dummy testing so let me go ahead and reload the space now and thank you guys for leaving eleven likes and sixteen people who are like watching back and forth between us or seventeen now uh thank you I appreciate it alright so this video should be playing up here maybe I don't hear anything did I actually save it make let me make sure I'm saving it into the correct directory cuz I don't wanna yeah that looks right maybe it isn't like two videos I was trying to test uh let's just see if the video I wanted originally wanted to work if not we're gonna go to back to the source folder and we're just gonna check the like video encoding and stuff this is seven twenty by four eighty so this video should definitely run if it's yeah this is six forty by three sixty so the other video should run just fine cuz that's like a lower resolution okay it didn't like that one we could try to Warhawk one it's probably like some encoding issue maybe I don't know if the Warhawk one runs now uh it will definitely be a uh whatchamacallit a encoding issue which sucks but then again we have the original video that belonged with the server which I'm totally fine with oh no problem I'm putting you to sleep bro dang it's odd cuz that hmm let me see this is very odd because now when I put the video up here it didn't um whatchamacallit kinda lost right now because I'm not too sure let me take this line out of code I wanna like make it not run cuz the posters are gone now which is weird I remember even in the older client I had it running just fine so I'm not I didn't update I didn't update it to have like a newer scene thing this should be the correct one maybe it's just one of those spaces that wants everything from online but I'm not too sure it's not I could have sworn I'm not going crazy but there were posters right here um I'll even do this I'll even start from total scratch and I think to be honest maybe I had something off and like maybe I had like a source file that was off uh maybe do you have to reload the space for the video yeah each time anytime I do posters and stuff I have to reload okay so I'm not crazy alright we got like a little issue right here because I did something and it literally deleted the posters from the space um okay you know what we're gonna take it like step by step I don't even think it's an encoding issue I think I may deleted something that it didn't like let me see something if this continues I may have to look at the scene configuration and see if those posters or like the actual file is lining up with what I'm trying to work with right now and uh yeah alright I see my issue now I didn't even put a slash but you can see here I think that's the best way to do it sometimes um just start from scratch and work one by one cuz at least I can once I know if the video is working then it's fine but yeah this is how testing is sometimes and maybe is a little boring that's why I tried to livestream it for you guys so you could kinda see in real time on the process and sometimes even the stress I have to go through to get stuff working alright so the video is live we got the video running let's just test if audio is okay so we got Warhawk let me turn on the TV yeah there's audio for sure so now we can right now we're gonna go and we're gonna also check the file for so we're gonna put two videos in row then if that's okay I'm gonna put the PlayStation home one video first because I wanted that one and we could leave Warhawk there as well I just wanna make sure it toggles out and the stream is looking good guys according to uh YouTube right now the stream health is fine I just wanna make sure because my internet's been breathing this last past days okay so it wasn't an encoding issue PlayStation home the Magnus showcase video is now working so um yeah everything is looking fine so yeah so that looks pretty good what I'm gonna do now for this poster I planning on maybe doing like two PlayStation home posters or I may actually have my the discord poster I always uh show off okay so I'm pretty happy about that at least we got that done um let's go ahead and look at the poster so let me just copy the source of this this wants five posters dang I don't know if it could handle five because we got two videos back to back and what I wanna do real quick I have a task for you guys um I'm gonna make sure the video oh so the video did toggle okay so welcome to my welcome to my crib facts I'll show you my crib in a second well I don't even have anything actually in this build but my other build did uh but yeah let me go back and I'm gonna do there was actually a post I really like that somebody made I think he's actually in our discord server and I use it sometimes I think he's actually in our Discord server and I use it sometimes. Yeah, this photo looks really good cuz it's high resolution. We could use this. I'm trying to think, hmm. I don't know. Let me look at my old client for a second cuz I have a pretty good idea on what I want to do. Uh but this photo is going over here with us. Uh we're gonna play with that a little bit later. I'm gonna look at my old client because I'm gonna. The client I'm working on now is what y'all guys are gonna have like very soon. I don't have a specific date, but. I'm going to release when I feel pretty happy on some new stuff. I'm not gonna do all the screen links when the original client comes out because that's just overkill and I'd rather do it in, you know, updates and patches when I'm free. But um. What I'm planning on doing right this second is uh. I'm going to try to find this content I was working on the hub with because that was some pretty good um. It was a pretty good basis I could work off of. So actually, let me go back to my local scene list. The hub is called Plaza Station. Okay. I just have to remind myself. It was literally right in my face. Okay, um, video. Images. I gotta look at the sources. It's calling stuff from S E Plaza. This is why I get confused. Screen content. Uh we could actually use these two pictures. Just to see if it works and then uh yeah. So let me go to. Alright, that was for UK. I wanna make sure that was for UFC. This is for god knows what. Blimp. Oh, no, that's for Indy. I remember doing that casino. That was another issue. Alright, poster. Let's set everything to this or. No, 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 no. Let me set this to image since that's where our images are going at and I'm going to uh see if these two toggle. And then we're gonna open up the two source and. Let me make sure. I called this image. Oh yeah, cuz this is the same thumbnail I used. We gotta check memory issues too. Memory looks fine right now and then we're gonna toggle out to Action District. Alright, Kyle, take your time. No worries. Twelve likes and twelve people watching. That's pretty cool. Alright, so. Alright, I don't know if you saw that little flash right there, but um yeah, this is not the correct poster. This poster is supposed to be up here, but at least we know that poster is generating images, which is fine. And you could see what it does. It squished the damn picture and I don't like that. Alright. Billboard. Uh maybe it's this one. I may actually add some PlayStation five poster stuff. Um. Let me. Let me save now and hopefully this billboard cuz I just read the scene links. And I guess it's gonna wrap around. Alright, so the video is still playing. Alright, so the billboard is back and it's working, so that is what I plan on having here. That looks pretty good. I'm gonna leave that there because uh you know, self-advertising and uh I think it fits the theme. But uh right here, we could put like maybe two posters. How you guys would think about like a PlayStation five poster? I'm thinking about doing some PS five stuff. Why not? Um, I think it would be pretty interesting to have. I'm not too sure, but I gotta resize it. That one I actually looked at was pretty damn straight. And we can utilize that for sure. I like how it looks. Let's go back to Photoshop real quick and I'm gonna use our base poster link. And we're going to. Actually, let's hmm. I don't know if I wanna do a full white border or if I want to do a. What you might call it, yeah. I don't wanna stretch it out too much. That looks kinda, can I center this? Hold on. Let me. Let me see. Just, I don't know. That looks okay to me. That should be fine because the resolution. But let me make sure it's in the correct directory. Um we are working in the S E A Action folder. Call this uh PlayStation five. Yeah. And let's just test if that file comes up on the screen. So. Let me open up the full screen link list and it's a PNG cuz I know I did it in Photoshop. I usually save everything in PNGs. P S five dot PNG. It will make the image bigger without pixelated. Oh, use vector scaling? I actually don't know how to do that and I probably need, I I used to be really good at Photoshop and then I stopped messing with Photoshop for a while, so it's like, yeah. I mean, the image was, I guess, pretty clear. Doesn't look too bad. I may um do, hey, black match, magic hacks. Welcome to the livestream. Thanks, all eighteen people who are watching right now. Thanks for joining. I appreciate you. Um but the PS five poster looks alright. Um, I'm gonna try to find some more PS five stuff related and if I have to make custom posters, I will then. But I wanted like in a certain five. I want it in like a certain um. Trying to find like a really cool looking image of the like PS five controller and I may maybe could do that on a. Alright, we can um. Open up Photoshop really quick. I'm going to see how I like this. I mean, I don't, I don't know. Hold on. I'm just trying to play around with stuff right now. Let me see. Let me see. I want that. I don't know how the white texture fits like. If it's white all around or it's like, I don't know. Maybe I should've made it all white. Let me. Use the eyedropper tool. Okay, so. Maybe I have to make a new one. I don't know how I'm gonna do this yet. Alright, we can make an all-white background and maybe that will help with this situation. I don't know why it looks like that. It looks grainy. I mean. Whatever. I just wanna. Hey, 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 what's up, what's up, what's up? Oh. Confessator, I do PlayStation home on PlayStation three. Yeah, I'm on uh the PlayStation three C. Right now, I'm just trying to make a really basic ass background. I mean, that's pretty damn basic. Is that? I don't know. I mean, I'm just trying to make something really basic. I don't know. I feel like that's ugly. I may actually uh work on something else right here. But I'll do some other stuff like for the other posters. In the meantime, I'll have like some old original content. Um, but in that case, since we're not messing with that, I'm gonna go back to my environments folder right here. In the meantime, before I like, I don't know. Yeah, I know I literally had. We could just do cuz it was like regular home advertisements and I could pick out advertisements I didn't really showcase. Um, since this is the Action District, I do wanna have things uh that's kinda action oriented or I don't know. If that makes any sense. I'm just trying to see what I have that I can really like uh show off. Yeah, I I don't know. It's kind of like a hard idea because we got this in a background. And this was like showcasing like V Me stuff. Uh, I don't know. Let me, let me see if anybody's talking in the chat. Oh, trust me, Scorpion. I don't got that on this. I have twelve gigabytes of PlayStation home. Do I, you, if you got twelve gigabytes, hold up. Let me stop right there. Uh yeah, I have a full tutorial. Seriously, um, if you got twelve gigabytes of home data, you can look at this guide right here. And um this is for me in particular. You could watch this video and as well, um. Give me one more second. I'll actually show. I will actually invite you to the home server. And if you need any help on extracting your data after I'm done live streaming, I will um be glad to assist you. Cuz yeah, twelve gigabytes is like the highest amount of data you can have via on home and. Twelve gigabytes will really help not only for the online server, but for the offline client. Like we could basically. Utilize that for a lot of things, but uh let me send you the. What you might call it, the Discord link real quick. I'm just looking at the. I know this is the quickest way I can give you the Discord link without uh. Doing stuff, but um. Here's another thing. But in the meantime, I am going to uh. Going to look at some data. We're going to try to get some new posters and we're gonna work with that. So let me look at. Uh just anybody's randoms. Always use this person's um data cuz they have like a lot of good stuff. Alright, we're gonna basically pick out stuff and yeah. Let me just. I don't wanna open up Discord right now. Why do I keep doing that? Quit. Um. We're just gonna pick out random advertisements and yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. That will be pretty good. I would feel like uh for. Let me see. I'm just trying to work in the folder, so we're in the exact same. Okay, that's the old client stuff. I don't want to. Okay, yeah, this is where I should be working at. Alright, this seems more action oriented. I mean, literally there's like an army truck over there, so that will be pretty good. Uh. Action, I mean, I guess arcade games are action-ish. Okay, and let me do this as well. Let me just look up DDSs so I won't have to see these INF files like every four damn seconds. I like look at stuff cuz that's annoying me. I'm gonna try to find stuff that's like action themed for sure. I mean, even though like the Action District just showed random ass uh stuff. I guess uh these are pretty good, the Lockwood poddy stuff. H G L stuff I know would be pretty good. Borderlands, I guess. Yeah, I'm trying to get like any like thing that's like vibed around like shooting games, uh just like, I don't know, action. I did say I wanted the costume hands, um. Nova's prom would be pretty good. I know they were advertisements for that one space, no man's land or whatever. If I see any of those, I would get that. Deli premonition. Yeah, that looks pretty damn action district-ish, if that's even a word. I don't know, that looks, already had these. Upwar, yeah, Upwar would be pretty good to have. Cuz that's like showing off the game. Um. It's kinda hard to like pick stuff. Borderlands, we already did. Oh, no man's land, yeah, there goes some no man's land stuff, boom. I mean, with all these damn, we're only gotta fill that many posters, but I like to have like a little bit more anytime. Um. Max Payne 3, that would be pretty dope. Assassin's Creed, or whatever that says, that seems. That feel, yeah, this feels like the theme of it, like of action district. I think we should be good, I may pick out a little bit more and then we're gonna work. Ninjas, yeah, that's pretty damn action related. Night Stalker. Wraithing Riggs, that's action. I, I think we're good for the most part. Yeah, I'm, think I'm pretty happy with this, uh. Let me see. You should do a livestream more where you show how to mod their consoles, I was thinking about that too, but I, what you might call it. Hey, is there a way to mod a Nintendo Switch save game data without jailbreaking? I'm not too sure, I haven't uh. I have a modded Switch, but I haven't really been in the modding scene, I know there is save editing uh stuff. But um, I think we got all of our data that we need. That we need for posters and um, right here. Right here, we're gonna put some action district related stuff since, uh I mean, not action district, some no man land sky stuff. And we could toggle it. So let me try to. Alright. And we're going to use these posters, um, let me just look at the source link. Right now. I deleted the, that. Alright, so. 290, this is 59, alright, so I'm getting set up both for the posters now. Hopefully, uh screen poster 5 will be the one I am standing in front of right now. If not, we will just slip them as we go along, but I'm pretty sure I have like, I don't know, 85% chance I'm correct on that. Hey, Jordan. I can't believe there's like 14 people still watching me. I can't believe y'all, y'all guys really do like these livestreams, so like. I'm pretty happy for that. Alright, so, um. We just gotta wait for the. What the hell's the other posters? Could've sworn. Unless I didn't save, which may be the case. I did save, so what's the issue? Um. I'm trying to see what I did wrong, I mean, the posters should be right here, I don't think I typed in anything off. We could try poster 2, I guess, I mean. I don't know why, I'm assuming. I don't see any other posters, like hiding. Oh, you gotta go, alright, take care, thanks for joining the livestream, I appreciate it. You have a good day, Red. Alright, so. Oh, thank you for the kind words, I mean. I enjoy what I do, I mean, this is why, like, to make it kinda less. Now, I wanna say boring because sometimes working on home can be like a lonely thing, uh just because of, you know. Just because I'm working like by myself a lot of the times, um. That's why I tried a livestream with you guys, so if anyone was interested to see like the internal development on what I work on and stuff. Then um, it, it actually, you know, in a sense, I am still doing work and B, I'm interacting with people, so it's a win-win. But um. The no man land sky posters out. I'm not too sure why it's, um, what you might call it. It posted in the second one, let's see if it does the third one then. Maybe it didn't like the fourth poster for whatever reason? It just find it odd. Cuz if. I don't know. Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, for sure, like, that's why I'm doing it, it's just for like preservation purposes as well as, um, you know. Just for the end user, to just see the development process, but um, yeah, that picture worked just fine. Um, we're gonna do some no man's land toggling. So, image 3 did work just fine. We're gonna toggle like maybe, I want like 3 posters here. Or maybe 4, 4, we're gonna do 4. I'm gonna try to find some other images we could use. Trying to get something action related, like deadly premonition looks something that, uh, you know, I don't know. Ooh, it is storming outside, I think. Uh. And I guess, uh, trying to see something else that could possibly go here. I don't know, that's a damn dragon, that looks. Hopefully, uh, the rain, it has been like mad rainstorms here and it looks like it's about the. Super Saiyan god outside, so hopefully my internet doesn't get cut out while live streaming. But um, I'mma keep going irregardless, until like, if it gets really bad, then I may have to call it quits. Because I don't wanna, you know, be in a thunderstorm live streaming and it's like going crazy. I don't, hopefully you guys don't even hear the thunder over the microphone. But yeah, for all the people who are watching, the 16 people, I appreciate it. Really, really do. Cuz y'all basically the reason why I'm doing this. Um, okay, so. This poster is now working. So it got that kinda grungy look, it does fit with the scene pretty well. Oh, with me? I think with Webman, um, the screen recorder was like a work in progress and like proof of concept, it really wasn't. I recorded my PlayStation 3 with a Elgato 60S, um, you know DVR recorder, or like a capture card. I used to record off a cheap $60 Amazon like USB video recorder, which is just fine, but it couldn't stream. Um, but I'm trying to get another PlayStation 5 poster right here. I'm not too sure. Uh, but I really want another one, so I'm gonna try to find another PS5 poster. Let me try to maybe look for a medium icon. Uh, hmm. I mean, this will make a good poster, I would say. Let me, um. Let me make sure. Hold on. I'm like, I'm in La La Land right now. Why, paint bucket layer? Alright, I'm just gonna make this all black and I'm going to take this thingy. I don't know, I'm trying to. My editing skills are kinda trash right now. Oh, no one, or no worries, yeah. I mean, I could just slap a PS5, uh. Logo right here. I could do like a. I could do like a PS5 one, just drag that to the top right here and literally just slap a PlayStation 5 right there, even though that's basic as hell. Um, sometimes basic is good. I'm trying to get like a transparent image of the console itself. I don't know if there's a. Oh, it is actually, we could use this. I mean, that's pretty damn basic, but whatever, I'm good with that. Maybe that's too basic. I mean, I think I should maybe raise the. Maybe I should crop it a little bit too. Or, I don't even. I'm gonna try to do something. I'm just gonna try to. And then I'mma save this as, I'm trying to like make stuff transparent, sorry if I'm not talking right now. Cuz sometimes when I'm trying to focus, I am. Alright. Now, we need to go to this source image, let me just copy this and uh, oh, just direct me there. I'mma call this PS5 2. Or it's basically PS52, that's how it's written out. Um. Let me try this, PS5 2. Alright, so that image should be there just fine, let me look at the livestream. Yo, the guy with the cash yesterday wants to, wants home on PS3, he has a CFW on Dex, but doesn't know the whole process of the PS3. By the way, are Namco screen links relying on Lua? I think Namco Theater does for whatever odd ass reason. If he wants home on PS3, then send him this Junas, hold on. You could send him that video cuz that will teach him how to like go from there. Alright, but uh, here is the PlayStation 5 mockup picture I did. I mean, it's pretty basic, but um, whatever, I, I don't really care about that. Um, this poster, we're gonna do some stuff behind here. Um, I think this poster actually may be poster 4, so what I'm gonna do is copy Source 5's screen links. We're gonna have the ninjas, I like that. This is gonna like show off some like action themed clothes, I guess, that's what I could do. I'll do like a 4 toggle thing like I did before and then I can uh. And it's raining outside of my house right now. Hopefully, cuz I heard thunder, so I'm not, I ain't trying to get clap. And my lights go out. Okay. Cuz like there's someone's nobody on. Alright, yeah, um, you could, bro, anytime you got people with data, just send them to me. Cuz I'll get it. And I'm archiving stuff, um, but yeah. We got the thumbnails working now, how does it look? How does it look, guys? I, I think all the posters look fine for the most reason. Videos are working and um, what you would call it, yeah, because. Junas, there's other people like this, me, Toyo Kyle helps on my cache data and stuff. How to you, or how does data help? Data allows me to. Uh, data allows me to restore these spaces from scratch, so I can rebuild these scenes. Um, via using certain tools and I can use, um. What you would call it, and I could restore stuff like posters, for example, I could restore like metadata for like scenes or like pictures. Uh, items and much more, and as well as for the online server. So we could import all this stuff back into online. but yeah I think we're done with this space right here we're gonna add this to our little checklist or my checklist S E uh Action District um added custom added original uh theme content via screen links I'm just making sure I've seen so many uh grammatical errors and this I could do this later but I'd rather do this now from my notes uh alright that may be good for the most part I could go back to this but oh snap don't tell me this still is uploading I'm like doing multiple things at once alright so um we got Action District done sorry about that there was no U U I D for the mod jacket I can make a thumbnail for it like I did guys symbols but I really want the original U U I D wait don't you have the original U U I D to it go to Pier Park I think Pier Park may have some screen links send me the mod jacket by the way and um did you upload the object deaths or whatever his stuff had hey miss Betty boot how you doing I'm trying to go into S E Pier Park it didn't that's weird when you get a chance uh via alright so Pier Park can't fix the thingy right here but it's lower script but we can at least put I don't know if they had posters in Pier Park that looks like a poster that looks like a poster um we could do some stuff in the Pier Park at least get some posters up for sure I can't do anything uh okay I have to do his scenes and spaces I I haven't got to that yet I've been working on GitHub stuff but um let's go ahead and check out Pier Park and we're going to um which I'mma call it try to get some posters up let me start from scratch as always what the hell okay let's go to the local scene list and let's let me find Pier Park so this is or it's called SE Core Casual and I should remember that but I don't and we're gonna go to or I'm gonna go over here and I'm going to try to find Core Casual okay okay so this does have screen links I got scared for a second alright images 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 so everything is just images what this is weird everything's set for offline which is odd let me see something yeah there's no screen content but everything was set to offline for this okay 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 S E Plaza what the hell um E three video okay I'm just give me a second cuz I'm trying to analyze this and I am very I'm not really understanding the situation at hand here because um yeah let me do this let's go ahead and give it what it wants since if it wanted in this directory we can just uh alright we're gonna go to images or what is what did they wanna call I don't even alright so we're gonna do this really really quickly oh P S um I'm going to really quickly I'm gonna put a random image here I'm literally just gonna put the PS five one here whatever and we're just going to have that as a dummy photo and we're gonna save cuz I honestly don't know where that image is going to be located or if it's gonna pop up dude ran SDNS for a dat there's a dat for unique ah yeah oh the Edo personal space oh really so I gotta add that actually you know what I may actually do that today right now in your face I may actually get the scene set up in your space um yeah I don't even know why none of these images are popping up this is so odd to me that um I just find this really odd how they are doing um Pier Park but I'm gonna actually check the scenes from data then um I don't even know where I have it located that stuff at right now give me a second let me we're gonna go through his data really really quickly let me see if the spaces are seen yeah I don't know why Pier Park is not popping up anything give me one second as well alright sorry about that I am back I had Amazon on my front door real quick but um yeah sorry about that but um what I'm going to do now is since Pier Park is giving me issues I am going to try to rebuild some scenes from scratch into your guys' face and um yeah we're gonna just get that straight up done and I'm gonna show you guys on how I really set up new spaces cuz um I guess Junas said from the latest data we did get um we did get some new spaces so alright so let me go ahead and uh in this new folder here I'm gonna go and set up some uh I'm gonna set something via from the tools real quick uh alright gotta run this via in batch mode alright so these files I'm copying over now are actual home spaces and I already know for a fact that these are decryptable and I'm going to show you kind of how I do this so I run this batch command thing and right now my PC is decrypting all of the folders what I'll do here as well in the meantime is take any request if you guys wanna see any spaces um if you guys wanted me to go to any spaces or you wanna check out anything you could let me know but um but once these uh folders are decrypted I'm gonna take a look at the spaces to see what like or basically what spaces are which and then I'm gonna try to add it to our client and I'm going to try to see um you know what the spaces exactly is so you can see here it's doing this thing right now but in the meantime I'll just go to random spaces and show you some maybe the stuff I've been working on we will go to the winter holiday version of Home Square two you wanna go to Namco Arcade I don't mind if you wanna see it I don't mind it we could go to Namco Arcade after uh S E Home Square version two oh that's nice that's what's up Jordan and sorry if you keep hearing my like table move and stuff um I have a really cheap table I don't it is what it is and uh my chairs are really old like freaking I don't even know it's an old creaky chair and it's not really good for my back but it is what it is this is what I work on and yeah alright so it's decrypting right now some of the stuff but here's uh the holiday version of Home Square the EU one we actually got this I'm really glad we have this version um I do always like the winter holiday spaces on home but let's go to Namco Arcade for my boy Kyle cuz he always yeah the space is still one of my favorite spaces and while I am going into between spaces I'm gonna take a look at which excuse me which data is which so let me check the XML's Pika Vox Lounge what the hell is this founded ten sixteen so this is Pika Vox Labs for sure um let me do something really quick I'm gonna check my um oh hey I'm gonna go to my Google Drive where I have all my stuff at and I basically have kind of like an internal database to tell if I have spaces or not so this I'm just searching up spaces and scenes so this scene right here say I don't have this version of Pika Vox so this may be an older version of it or a newer one alright that's the atmosphere stuff Pika Vox Lounge alright Pika Vox Lounge so yeah it's just Pika Vox Labs and I could tell um let me see I don't know if the Japanese version oh it says J Commerce Point I could tell if it's Pika Vox Labs due to alright yeah they got some Japanese game names let me use uh I'm I'm already know for sure it's probably Pika Vox Labs but um let me use Google Translate real quick and let's see uh let's see what's like the root version of this Escape Virus yeah this is Pika Vox Lab so it's one point eighty version of Pika Vox Lab publication HDK so I'm gonna label this right now so Peak Vox Labs um we already have Pika Vox Labs in the client itself and uh I don't even know why it's taking so long to load up Namco Arcade everything's running I just don't know why ah there it go alright let me see this one let me see if I even have it in my database itself alright we don't even have this space or I don't have it so I know they don't have it XML one point seventy Edo this is like some new Edo map you said it was some new Edo map right probably a newer version sorry gotta go download PlayStation home and phone but that oh no take care Jordan you have a great day let's let's see a home guide fit I don't have the I have the guide actually um which I'mma call it I have the I have like the guide freaking uh which I'mma call it like the icon over your head I'm trying to find it in the background I don't even know to give you ID to it oh no don't tell me I froze I think I made froze hold on Edo personal space I I want the official name to it I think I did froze which is shitty oh yeah there's definitely a memory er- error alright so I did froze but that's okay I'm gonna reboot back up home but I'm going to this has Edo scenes alright you know what we're gonna do uh six seven four five we're going to I'm gonna map this really quick and then I'm going to see And then I'm going to see. What is it? Let me make sure the tool is done running, alright, everything's done for the most part. Alright. And then. Alright, so home is back on the screen right now. I gotta plug in my controller because for some reason it's not. Uh. It's not connecting to my device. My PS3 wants to be special. And I'm trying to do multiple things at once. Alright, now let me go to the folder I was working on. Alright, so let me go and map this. Alright, so I'm mapping this Edo space in the background, home will be booting up, but it will be taking its time. Yeah. If you probably had like ICE or you did like Atom Catch Exploit, you probably had it. So home is taking its sweet time since it's trying to load a bunch of scene data, but um. I'm trying to see what Edo space they had that was personal. Because I'm not too sure about that, hold on, Edo, Granzilla, personal? Cuz I want the official name to it. Is this it? Tenement House or whatever? Well, I could tell. Once um, well, once it maps, I will get the source images and I will recreate the .SDCs and stuff and I will um. I would create it in live time. Alright, so if it's. If it's that, I will create some metadata for it right now. So let me just write this down, personal space. Uh, new person. Alright, so it actually mapped out. Scenes, Edo. Let me see, um. Let me check my uh. I'm gonna check my uh. What you might call it? I'm going to check this list I have here. It's like a Google Drive list I have of like all the spaces and like its metadata names. Edo Lounge? How many damn Edo Lounges it was? Yurada? I gotta see if it's popping up in uh, like what's the source name though? That's the issue. Yeah, it just says Edo and. I don't know. Alright, I already see some issues I'm gonna have here when mapping the Edo place because it's already missing textures and I have to debug that. Alright, but. I'll take your word for it and I will just go on a fly, so I'mma call this Edo dot APT. I already know this is a scene file, I don't even need to look at it because I already know, um. Already named. Alright, so I already know here, um, more than likely the scene place will go smack dead in this folder right here. I'm assuming it will come in here, if not, I will have to change it now. But uh, what I'll do is name this to the metadata stuff, so. I have this .STC file I will use as well later on and I will use that later just for the metadata. Alright, so right here, right now, I'm creating the metadata for the scene, so this is how home will read the data itself. And that's how it knows like which is which, so right here how you say, see it says Harbit Studio, that's what I'm doing for here. Uh, but um. The maker of course is Granzilla. Then I'm giving it the description, I'm pulling this one because I know it's from the server. Then I'm creating a thumbnail root, so I'm gonna call this Edo. I wanna go to my thumbnails folder, which I have already in a shortcut and I'm going to um. Name this as Edo APT. Yeah, whatever, cuz Edo Apartment. And this is where our thumbnail is gonna be, but we're gonna make a custom one later. And I'll kinda show you guys on how I do that. Um, but for the most part, what I'd like to do is make sure I have my base. I already have a lot of the stuff pre-made like line done. And then I'm gonna save this right now, boom, so. My STC file is good for the most part, I just gotta name it as this so it reads from the same directory, so Edo APT dot STC. And that should be done, now. I'm gonna go to my local scene list and I'm gonna create a local scene and I like to keep my test scenes at the top anytime I'm testing stuff, so. I'm going to, it's a personal space, I'm gonna make sure it has a personal space flag, so the type will be home, group will be home, keyword will be home. Environments, actually, Japanese spaces, they really don't like to have environments. So I will have this run from the Edo spot. So Edo. Actually, to make this even faster on me. I would just copy this section of code right here. I know I named it Edo APT dot scene. Let me put my slashes in here. And then uh. Just to make sure I have it as Edo APT. Alright. So everything's good for here, I'm gonna take all these folders that got pre-made and I'm gonna drop it into the root of the build. And now it's copying the Edo space. Now what I'm going to do in the process of that is save this and I'm going to wait for it to copy over, it's rewriting some of the MDLs, which is fine. And then, yeah. I'm going to open up my Protegy Target Manager, I'mma relaunch the .self and then I'm gonna start from the beginning. Let me read the livestream. Jinx found a music player in Object Devs. I thought it was an E, you know, do scenes map similarly to objects? Yeah, I do, it basically is the same thing for the most part, but um, the only thing that's really different. It's just sometimes you merely gotta read the XML files if there are any issues. Um, in terms of like textures. But then listen to the Edo Tenement House music and it matches it. It probably, it maybe is a Lua script music player, Ju- uh, Junas. But um, we're booting into home now. And we're gonna see this new space for ourselves, so hopefully everything is straight. And thank you all for coming into this livestream, um. I gotta drink that water, so as this is running in the background, just to keep um, the stream alive. I'm going to be checking out the other spaces and I will be uh. Doing that, so let's check 9755 or whatever the hell this is called. Alright, this is not even in my database either. Alright, this has a lot of stuff, what the hell? Alright, this got a bunch of MP3s, uh. I don't even know what the space is, oh, it got a couple, Sodium Blimp, okay, so this is Sodium Blimp? For. So you were right about that. It's 1.80, alright, so. It said the personal space though. Alright. Let me uh, use this one, Sodium Blimp. Alright, so it's a personal space, boom. So we got two. Let me. Let me type in the metadata, but okay, so home just booted up. Why didn't it save, didn't I not save the local scene list? Oh, I'm stupid as hell. I didn't, okay, okay, okay. I have an issue, but whatever. I didn't um, save the correct name, so it's gonna read it as Andy's Room or whatever. Okay. In the meantime, we're gonna actually knock two birds in one stone since I rushed into this. I'm going to take this, name of this, we're gonna get the metadata. And we're gonna do Sodium Blimp as well, so just to make this quick on me. I'm going to write down, or type down I should say. That we're doing Sodium Blimp next. And um, let me do that now, so. Sodium Blimp, personal. Alright, so what I'm going to do as well is take my tool again and I'm going to go to this and I'm going to uh, just map. And I'm gonna have Sodium Blimp in the background. Um, just to have some metadata created right now. I'm gonna go ahead in the folder itself. I'm gonna go into Sodium Blimp. I'm gonna go and name this uh, blimp dot STC. And we're gonna create our metadata now for it. Just so we are a head start and I'm, you know, doing extra steps as I go to this process, so. I'mma call this Sodium Blimp Personal Space. And I'm going to call this uh, what the hell, Lockwood made this, yeah, so Lockwood were the people who made this space. I'mma call this Sodium Blimp. And we're gonna make a thumbnail section for it. Or nah, I'm trying to create a new one, I'm not trying to delete one. And once I figure out the metadata to this for sure. Uh, yeah. Let me see. I'mma go back into my home XML file and I'm gonna try to see if I can get the original um. What you might call it? Icon. Okay, so. Let me just, since this is up now, let me look up Blimp. Does anything come up with Blimp? Alright, two things come up with Blimp. So let me look in my thumbnails folder section and we're gonna find the Sodium Blimp. So this is like the actual Sodium Blimp Apartment, we're gonna actually search it in my uh, one of my directories I have on my PC. I keep uh, like all of the scenes thumbnails into one, so. Yeah. Hopefully it scans, alright, so Sodium Personal Space is done. Oh, I already see an issue. Two damn scenes, the hell? So I know this is the scene for it. Alright, I just had a moment. Instead of just looking in here, I could look in world map and just try to find it. World map didn't have it, the hell, did scenes have it? Let me. Cuz I didn't. If I can't find the Sodium Blimp icon, it's gonna be kind of a pain, I probably have it, but I just, okay, so. Alright, these are probably the two images that came from home itself, so. Alright, so we did find a Sodium Blimp image at least, let me go to. I gotta check the STC. Yeah, so I made one. Alright, so the Sodium Blimp, this is gonna be our icon that will show up in the navigator. I'm gonna just have that labeled and that is done. And I'm not too sure the Edo Apartment, um. Hold on. More than likely we did find the Edo Apartment. I don't even know what I'm doing right now, hold on. Edo APT. Alright, so this Edo Apartment icon is more likely uh. Just had it, or just seen it I should say. It's more likely this one just definitely looks like more of uh. That looks more of like the actual scene itself and yeah. So. We got both of the thumbnails done for Sodium and also. we got both of the thumbnails done for sodium and also the Ido tenement apartment or whatever it's called but there's an issue already see here well there's two issues with both scenes um well first I need to move this into its correct location what the hell why the alright so that's where I have to have the file location located at so for sodium and I need to also figure out that the MP3 is like the rest of the stuff that's in this folder location needs to go in the correct directory or like the scene will have trouble booting up and there's missing textures and stuff which will be fixing in live time today as well but um before we even get too hectic with that let's just go ahead and map I'm gonna go ahead and map this space as well so um I'm gonna go ahead and find a dummy space that seems pretty good for this situation I like to use Acorn Park cuz it's always in my face but I can't find it right now or what is called Vme yeah I'll use the Vme scene and I will uh use that as the basis so this right here I'm gonna go and rename it to sodium uh blimp alright so that's sodium blimp and then I'm going to show environments Vme Park that's not the correct low file location it's this right here so I'm gonna go ahead and just knock this to the side and let me make sure my slashes are okay so sodium blimp sodium blimp models and then I'm gonna put the dot scene name here so it's reading from the correct thing and the dot scene I have it as is blimp dot scene and we should be good let me just make sure that is straight so now we got the local scene list done and now I need to figure out uh all of these MP3 files there's um I guess five audio files or maybe six I'm not even uh too sure but I am going to figure them out right now by looking at the dot scene cuz that's where everything's at so let me do a quick Ctrl F or not MP4 but MP3 okay so it looks like it's to mini games there's one two three four five six there's only one two three wait this is probably the sixth one alright so what I'm gonna do is manually look up each dot scene or each MP3 manually via and look at the hash to it so uh so eight seven C do we see that hold on eight four D alright so this file right here that one didn't map that's the teleporter uh MP3 and I have to put this in the correct directory I'm assuming we could just knock one bird and or like all birds in one stone if it's going into the same file locate and no it's not so I have to do it manually damn it so it may take a little longer but that's okay um let me go ahead and take the file we just figured out what MP3 sound it was and we're going to go and just follow the root directory so it's mini game sodium shared Dynarex FXS or FX whatever and hold on teleport MP3 so right here this is where the MP3 is located at we could kinda maybe get a head start a little bit and make sure like these files are in a correct location yeah so there's no sound folder here so let's go ahead and create one so it's called sounds so this is where the audio would be located alright so we could also in that sounds folder we're gonna create two other folders by looking at this really quickly hologram uh teleport porter MP3 alright and then those are where or basically that's where it's gonna be located so let's go ahead and take a look at this and we're gonna go ahead and find the other sounds so this is zero forty-nine and that equates to hologram loop alright so that's that hologram loop MP3 let me go ahead and cut and we're gonna go to mini games sodium shared Dynax whatever sound and that goes into the hologram folder so that's that let me take a break and let me go back to the livestream oh the home poker space are you talking about uh what you might call it I'm trying to think I see the action or not action but uh the sports walk thing alright so no one was talking in the chat so I'm fine so hologram loop that's there uh I'm going to go and find the other one so gonna take the source file right here go to four nine A and we're going to go to uh find that one so that was that one let me cut it I'm gonna go back a folder since it's like right there sodium shared D N A or D Y N FX hologram gonna paste that right there that's the source file to that is hologram off and then a hologram on we could just take that since it's in the same general file location and that's nine four zero so that's not eighty-four that's basically that so um or yeah let me just copy that now so hologram on is this let me cut same thing and you can see how this tedious this process is sometimes um only due to the fact that um only due to the fact that I have to manually check each one but like imagine all the spaces I did where I had it like manually map music and trust me it's not a fun time alright so I'm gonna take half of this and I'm going to okay so that's five B E let me go into we could already conclude these two are the last ones so let's go ahead and just cut these or not that you leave oh god hold on I made a boo boo let me go to here alright now let's cut let's go into the mini game section again same thing but this time it's going to teleporter and we already know the first one so that's teleporter electro why can't I copy that it's like okay there we go that's the first one so we just gotta rename that to this and this source file right here we're just gonna double check just to make sure cuz why not but yeah that's for that one alright so all of the audio is good right now we could worry about the textures at boot because it will basically just it will statewide having issues but we at least we got their environments done and we got the whole space done I'm gonna go ahead and go to my root folder and paste that in there and then we're gonna go fix the textures and let's go ahead and reboot back into home let me make sure alright yeah I'm gonna reboot home now let me overwrite copy alright so right now I am just waiting for home to reboot fully and then from there we're gonna go ahead and see if the spaces are booting up just normally so and then I guess in the meantime since we are working or I'm working I'm going to uh go and alright so one of the spaces he had was the playground but we already had that version that's like the I guess the EU one let me see Acorn Meadows Park Halloween we had that and uh Hudson bomber dome we had alright so he yeah like Juna said he only had two scenes which is okay we did game tune scenes and that will be in the next core update so um what I'll do now is what I'll do in the config so what I'm gonna do now is once we test these new scenes get them all packed up and pretty I am going to add this to my client list uh but right now we're just fixing stuff um holy snap this is like a lot of alright so home is getting booted into right now right now I'm gonna use alphabetizer which is my best friend let's see okay so stuff is here Ido you could see here that the image has popped up we're also gonna be checking for DDS and texture issues hopefully it won't run into any texture issues that I can catch but let me use alphabetizer right now alright so there the sky is actually broken wait maybe it's not nah the sky looks broken let me um I gotta fix the sky now I'm going to um see what the hell space but um I'm trying to think right now I may have to use another Atmos file and I could probably use a configure or one that's already been configured to the correct one but at least we know it boots up um I'm gonna walk around the space just to see um I'm just trying to see if there's any texture issues yeah there is some texture issues in this space it's probably a probe issue I I'm assuming cuz this is glitching out just to make it just to make it a little bit easier I'm going to uh I'm gonna go ahead and uh I'm gonna just run around the scene really really quickly just so I can see if like collision is working alright so yeah it's just this is basically a space I could tell it's just that uh the floor is glitching up it's probably good due to the sky warhawk oh snap yeah I don't know why that's there let me remove oh there's like a little animation I guess this person is watching herself that's weird um and probably this whole town is working as well if I try to disable collision uh due to the fact that um what you might call it alright so that's done sodium blimp okay so I did a little issue okay um this is odd so the sodium blimp still got the same dot STC metadata so that's actually a mistake I did but um that's okay I could've sworn I saved I really alright so since I didn't save that I'm going to just recopy everything over and uh it's also another issue I did in the client itself I labeled this as a public space and it needs to be a uh private one or personal so I just updated those two things right now I'm just gonna scan I'm just gonna reboot into Ido it's just object issues it's having so that could just be like mini games or whatever but I need to uh fix the sky for this later but uh let's go check sodium just to see if that works let me see this is weird cuz it didn't change its metadata environments sodium blimp sodium blimp let me check it alright so for some reason it didn't do I don't know why the metadata didn't change but um clearly I need to uh switch this picture back and I know I just labeled all that so let me see Lockwood alright now I'm going to save and I'm going to just like scan through a bunch of other scenes so when I come back up the list it should be done or like it should reload the metadata so hopefully the picture will pop back up and it's correct metadata it will be alright alright so scrolling back up the list we should be fine alright so the picture didn't pop up but that's fine it's whatever I already know that the picture should um yeah the image should pop up it's probably I have to either restart home holy snap so yeah so the sky works um as you could see here it's really really crying about some video that is requesting I don't know I don't know what a video would be located at though like where would it it's like the video on the side of the blimp or like is that it maybe the sodium blimp would have the actual I don't even know let me look at let me look at probably let me do some research cuz requesting cuz the server is going crazy for the video or the the logs what is the video oh my god it's called sodium blimp alright so what I'm going to do real quick once again is take a look at the local scene and um I'm actually gonna look at the main file real quick but let me go and stretch for a second and then I'm going to go ahead and figure this out alright I am back sorry about that once again um let me go to and try to figure this out so right now I'm assuming that this video or um what you might call it I'm assuming that the video will play on the side of the blimp so let me um let's go to the environments folder I'm just gonna go to the source one screen content yeah it's weird everything that wanted to request via on the screen sodium one home trailer okay so everything was actually set to local for whatever reason I'm going to uh try to get a sodium blimp trailer I don't know it may be in his cache data um we could do this trailer to be honest cuz it will work for this process I could do that I'm gonna look in his cache but use this method to get a video just to see if any video runs so let me do that that's weird I didn't like that link alright I don't know what it did now but it's alright so it's downloading that video and let me just go to the screen links again it literally just wants uh screen content so I will just slap it into this directory and we're gonna go to the actual environment screen content and I I I'm assuming it just literally goes right here alright so right now at least one video should be playing what's my PSN it's hopefully we get one video working and then I guess after um if we get a video working I'm going to transition this live stream over back to fixing the Edo um sky and then I may call it I'm more than likely gonna call it a rap I think we did a lot today um we did get a according to my list we get we got two scenes working uh and we got let me see according to my list we did fever arena and we did action district so we did two spaces or we did like two spaces and videos and we did to um new spaces I don't know why it's taking so long hopefully it's loading so I know it's not like a freezing issue um but I guess in the meantime while that is loading up in the background I will take a look at what data we have on hand and maybe we will find that MP four that will detail something for sodium alright this is like a super bomber man video alright so maybe this is the one of the video names I don't know hold on actually that is probably you know what I actually have an idea if this is it then oh my god well we did find one of the videos I thought that idea would work but uh okay I don't know why is it taking too long oh I think I know the issue I didn't even have my PS three connected I was like why is it taking so long it should be loading sodium right now without any issues I'm like ah that was me being dumb I disconnected my PS three for a second alright so yeah the blimp is playing that big ass screen alright so the other side of the screen right here um we can't have well we could have like three videos toggle in the same uh directory but we can't have more than one but since we only have two videos and I wanna keep memory down um sodium blunt what I'm gonna do is going to take the video we just found out and renamed we're gonna go and just get that video really really quickly and we're just gonna uh copy that to the source root via right here then what we're going to do is go to the screen links folder and we're gonna change one of the screen links I don't know which is left and right oh that's left I guess alright so I see what they did what we're gonna put some like cool sodium images on one side of the blimp and we're gonna put the other one so we're just gonna get some cool sodium images and we're just gonna slap it into the client build and yeah cuz on the left side of the blunt will be both of the videos and uh other side will have it um does it simply have the bomber man video and not the diner dash combo I'm not too sure do you know if the play videos in a PlayStation move place play I'm not if not I'm likely sure ninety percent having them in my cache um for that space I already restored the um PlayStation move video I did a custom one but yeah if you if you donated data you could tell me um whatever does it simply have the wait I don't know if that video in particular here I will go back into I'll go back into the root of that video I don't know if you could see it but I don't it just seems like a regular bomber man ultra I don't think it's like the diner dash one I think it's the same one that you gave me for Hudson Gate but um I'm gonna look up some I'm gonna try to look up something sodium PlayStation home I'm trying to get like really clear pictures of sodium and we're gonna just like showcase like some really cool screenshots nah I really want if anything I'll make some damn screenshots for sodium alright that's alright I think we got like a couple of screen images we can use for sodium alrighty um that should be like enough images we can use on the side of the blimp and we can just uh slap that over there now I'm gonna just name him uh and maybe a little different just so I won't have like random stuff so to alright we're gonna have five images take out one line so two three four I don't even care if it is out of order alright so the source images are done everything should work just fine now the only reason um that other image is not working is because I have to restart it ah okay thanks oh snap I dropped my controller but thank you all for staying tuned alright so that is working that video is playing yeah alright so the sodium pictures are booting up on the screen just fine so yeah um maybe not the best quality of images I may maybe do some uh uh custom ones but uh I'm gonna go back to Granzilla Edo the regular version actually I think that version had an issue too let me see something give me one moment I'm going to try to find something real quick cuz after this I'm after I get the sky done I'm gonna end the live stream because I'm pretty hungry but um let me go back to the source file I am going to go to this folder right here environment sodium blimp alright so alright I'm gonna use the pre made uh sky I already did and I just gotta find and I just gotta find the official directory so I know it's in the Edo map scenes let me see Atmos alright so where is my controller alright let me just load the Edo space one more time and then the sky should be fixed alright yeah the sky is now fixed so sky is fixed I don't know if they have any probe issues alright it still has like that little probe issue situation I'm not even too sure maybe a lower script thing but um overall I'm pretty happy on uh fixing everything for today um just to test one more thing oh snap I'm gonna reload the build just making sure everything is in the correct area or actually um damn it I should have did this earlier actually I'm going to rename everything or not rename I'm gonna alphabetize my list I'm going to or alphabetize my local scene list so it's you know in alphabetical order when you guys get it and then um I'm going to delete this okay that looks fine let me change the build date since I'm working on it now I'm gonna save I'm gonna reload home one more time and then everything should be alphabetized the icons should be straight and everything of that nature but uh let me minimize this stuff out now arcade center works I'm still alive yeah I'm I'm a workaholic once I start on something I wanna finish it but um just wanna make sure I did that so trying to see trying to separate this off in categories I could actually do this later but um I'm just trying to write down my uh notes just waiting for home to boot up um this is probably the way how the client is gonna be as much as I wanted to speed up the process it has to read a lot of data at boot or it's like if it doesn't read this data at boot you're gonna have more issues throughout the client but once it's fully done um we're just gonna do this quick check but um alright so I boot it up alright so I think should be in alphabetical order alright boom let's just check if the Edo space is all good and gone alright so the sky is good let's check uh the other space so sodium alright so sodium blunt you see the image is working up right now the metadata is here and yeah I think we did a lot this live stream um I did enjoy live streaming with you guys again I had some free time that I wanted to take alright so let's just see if the video is playing alright sky is working video is playing boom yep and the pictures are working so we got everything we wanted done for today um I'm proud of what work I've accomplished we did a lot I had a lot of fun with you guys I'm watching but I will have this live stream processed up a little later on once uh YouTube has it so you guys if y'all missed anything earlier um you could go ahead and check that out but yeah with that being said my name is Nagato and I'll see you guys next time um maybe I'll do a live stream I'm not too sure when cuz I really do wanna get working on other stuff uh for my channel like the Vita so if you're into Vita modding like me stay tuned cuz I got a lot of stuff but yeah um if take care of Robin take care Kyle take care Mac and take care anybody who's else is watching but I'll see you guys next time peace